Lincoln Heights Regular Council Meeting is now in session. Today's date is Monday, July the eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is eight fourteen. Roll call, Ms. Randolph.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun-Munia.
Present.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter.
Present.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Present.
Mayor, we have seven who are present. We do have a quorum.
Would you bow your head, uh, your heads before the Almighty, who is looking down on us today? Father God, we come to you, giving you thanks for what you've done, what you're doing, and what you're going to do. We ask that you open us up and give us what we need in order to do the village business. All of this, I asking your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Motion in order for acceptance of the agenda.
It's been moved in second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Filing of the Journal Committee, the whole meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth, and regular council meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth. Motion with any necessary corrections needed. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, Councilman Daniels?
No announcements at this time.
Councilwoman Munia?
Uh, the Mount Zion Baptist Church of Woodland is having their fish fry, um, on July the thirteenth. It's a community outreach, um, program, and the community is welcome.
You know what time?
It's from me, from twelve to four P M.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Baber?
No announcement at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Key?
No announcements.
Okay. Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we had the dedication of the bench, uh, Saturday for, uh, Mr. Leslie Edwards. Um, it was a really, really nice fair, well-attended. Uh, we had the dignitaries of, um, the illustrious, uh, Tim Burke, who, uh, used to be our, our law director, as well as former, uh, village manager Bill Cordy, and, um, Judge Tyrone Yates. And what they did, um, Mr. Edwards, who lived in the Valley Homes and at one time was the, um, president of the Board of the Valley Homes, discovered that the HUD or the federal government had been overcharging the Valley Homes, uh, for the payment of those temporary housing. So he, um, solicited the help of, um, Tim Burke and Mayor Dantzler. You had, um, Representative Bill Gradison and Metzenbaum, all these individuals coming, um, to the aid of the Valley Homes so that, um, that mortgage could be reduced. And, um, Mr. Edwards was also, uh, one of the original Tuskegee heremen. And because he lived here, um, Jacqueline Covington thought it would be nice to do a dedication for him because of what he did in the community. And he also was instrumental in having a bench done in Avondale for, um, I think his name was, um, Mr. Lear, who was an original Tuskegee hereman. And, um, a white officer, his name escapes me. But they used to go to school together. They didn't know it until they were in the war. And, um, Mr. Edwards thought that it was appropriate that those two individuals be recognized because they went to the same school in Avondale, and they wound up being best friends. So she wanted to repay the, the favor because he was very instrumental, um, in a lot of, um, social justice advocacy. So, we dedicated the bench, and then Tim, um, brought to us, presented to the village, um, a picture that I'm gonna pass around of, um, when they got the HUD to reduce that mortgage. Um, Tyrone Yates was a White House intern, and they didn't know they were gonna see him. They had gone there expecting to see, um, Mr. Martin, who was like the minority affairs person for the White House at the time, under, um, President Carter. Well, that day, they had, they say fired, but, um, Andrew Young resigned. So President Carter couldn't meet with them, the other person couldn't meet with them, so, um, they sent in Tyrone. And they came down, and it was time for the mortgage burning. Um, President Carter's son came because President Carter couldn't come. And Mr. Leslie Edwards took the picture that I'm gonna pass around with the information about, um, the Valley Homes mortgage being, um, reduced. So Herman Dantzler's in the picture, Tim Burke is in the picture. Um, Ivan Keeling, who was also on the board at that time, is in the picture. So, um, Tim Burke thought that it should hang in the village somewhere.
I'm gonna pass this on because I've already read it, and was that the event?
Mayor, you wanna say anything about the event?
Yeah, I, I wanted to add also that, um, Mr. Edwards also has a bridge, um, named after him in Springfield Township, and I did not know that, so I'm, I'm gonna make sure I go by there to that bridge. Um, I can't remember, Ms. Mitchell, can you remember when they na, when, uh, Glenn McFarlane mentioned about them naming, um,
The bridge?
The bridge after.
It's on, is it Mockingbird? I think Mockingbird is the street where he lived in Springfield Township.
Yeah, and there's a bridge, and it has his name on it and everything, and so I, I'm gonna go by there, um, because I did not know that. So, uh, I was, um, it was a, uh, honor actually to, um, to speak, do the welcome, and I let them know that the elected officials welcomed them and his family, they were all there to the village. So, um, it was very nice. If, if anyone has not seen the bench, it is beautiful. Uh, made out of marble, I believe. So it's very pretty.
And Mayor, I just want to remind, um, council and those who may be, um, viewing this broadcast that our Family Fine Arts Series, um, that is being sponsored by, um, Hamilton County Commissioner's Small, um, Event Grant kicks off on July twentieth for our Shakespeare in the Park. We're having Hamlet, so everybody come out. And we're also having a musical petting zoo where folks can try out different, um, instruments put on by this Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra. That's our first event.
Did you put, what, did you say what time it's going to be?
It's from, um, the petting zoo for the musical instruments is at six o'clock, and the play starts at seven.
All right. Vice Mayor Charles Jeter?
Yes, I do have something. Uh, Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church is excited about bringing the Day of Love to the village, uh, to us. On Sunday, August the twenty-fifth, from, uh, ten A M. to four P M. They are, uh, we are, I should say we are because we, it is a combined effort with the church and the village need volunteers, so I was asked to talk to council about, uh, getting involved. Now, I don't know everything that they will need for you to do, but there is a, uh, day that they're going to set up and the day they're gonna take down, uh, uh, things. Uh, so if you want to, and I think, uh, my opinion that council should get involved with this, uh, you can, you can, uh, send your name to, um, the clerk of council, and I will find out, uh, what all they need help with. Um, they're gonna start setting up on Saturday, so if you can't do anything Sunday, then you can do something Saturday. And you may be able to do something both Saturday and Sunday. Uh, they will have all the food in the world. They're preparing for about twenty-five hundred people to come into the village and those that, uh, live here. Uh, it will be a carnival-type atmosphere, the petting zoo, um, uh, they're gonna braid hair, and they're also gonna cut, cut heads, uh, cut hair. They, uh, trying to get a merry-go-round, and of course, everyone loves the bouncy houses, so kind of try to get that in, and much, much more. So, uh, come on board and alongside of us to make this happen, so we'll have a day of fun food. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Uh, Mr. Lemon, any announcement for you so far?
Uh, it's gonna be, if, if it's, it's
I come later.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
I've got a few things.
All right, um, I did wanna announce the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Um, as we have started, uh, preparing for that, um, it is gonna be August the twenty-fourth at the Lincoln Heights Elementary. Um, the time will be, um, ten, ten P M. to, uh,
Eight A M., ten A M.
I said ten P M. That's a late night, man. Ten A, ten A M. to one o'clock. Um, we have began to, um, this year's gonna be actually the twentieth anniversary for the Legacy Award. So, uh, we're planning for it to be a very successful Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Um, we have began to identify, uh, some of the nominees, so I'm gonna thank Councilwoman, uh, um, Calhoun Munia and, uh, Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell, uh, for your entry of nominating some individuals to be recognized. Um, two of them will be, um, I can, uh, inform two, three of them. But, um, we are gonna be, uh, recognizing, uh, Doron Hunter. Uh, we'll be recognizing, um, uh, Ralph Randolph, is it Randolph Smith? Because I call him Nutty Pie. And then our own Valerie, um, Kendrick, she'll be, um, recognized. And we are going to be reaching out to, um, appreciate our past mayors. So we will, we will be contacting them and see if they'll, the ones of our living mayors. We want to acknowledge that, uh, the great work that they did for the village of Lincoln Heights, so they will be, um, in the house as well.
And Dennis Thomas.
Yes, and Dennis Thomas, thank you. I knew it was someone else, but, um, I know I'll be doing another announcement. Um, also, our Lincoln Heights Day, uh, not Lincoln Heights Family Parade, uh, will be August the thirty-first, and we'll be starting, uh, we've already actually started sending, uh, flyers out to various organizations that have, um, been a part of the parade year over year. So we've been doing that over a month now. So we'll continue to start getting, um, attendees for the parade, uh, that will be, um, starting, uh, staging at eight-thirty and then beginning at ten o'clock, so we'll continue to do advertisement on that. Um, I do know, uh, we won't have any council meetings, uh, the month of August. Um, we do have a few, uh, standing committee meetings, um, that are gonna be taking place, uh, this month. Before that happens, we have our Law and Safety meeting, uh, that will be at five-thirty, uh, Monday, along with our Finance meeting at six-thirty. Um, we had, uh, listed our Recreation meeting, but we did not have a quorum last week. Um, but I did wanna ask, Councilman Daniels, do you think that you may be ha, able to have a Recreation meeting? And the reason why I'm asking also is, um, we have been successful in getting a couple of the residents, uh, to be part of the Recreation Commission, and they, some of them were wanting to, they asked about recreation, so that's why I was asking. Do you think, um, you may be able to meet before we recess?
With, with all due respect and regards to, to Recreation meeting, uh, that was not a committee I was, you know, asked to, 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 I did not ask to lead. I thought, Councilwoman Baber did a great job, well, was attempting to do a great job over the past six years in that, and replacing her was not something I felt comfortable with, um, particularly, um, how, um, her efforts were, were, um, seen at times. So, um, as, as Chair of Recreation is not something that I feel comfortable with, and I also stated that in the email as well too, but I will also state it for the public record, um, I did not feel comfortable replacing, um, Ms. Baber at Recreation Chair.
Um, okay, so do you think that the committee as a whole, if they'll be meeting, whether there's a chair or not? Um, because there's three on that committee, and if we could get two people to attend, at least will we be there for the residents? Um, I do know some of the council members chose not to chair any committees, but I think as, uh, as our civic duty, we should still have standing committees for our residents to attend, whether we want to be a chair or not.
Last time I checked, um, it takes two out of three to have a quorum, so I'm assuming that there will be a meeting that day, and if two out of three members show up, then I believe there will be a meeting that will take place.
That would be fine. All right. Then we, I will, uh, but I just need to find out a date, so if, if you, do you think you guys can meet, or?
Well, like I said, I, I, I don't accept the, the chair position, so I think that'd be up to the chair.
I think the committee, someone from the committee can also schedule a meeting also, because we always have co-chairs as well, in case the chair can't attend.
Well, I, I, like I said, I don't feel comfortable setting that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, um, I think that, um, we need to have Ms. Baber so that Mr. Daniels, um, may feel comfortable. Ms. Baber stated that she did not want to chair.
Yeah, yeah, she did say she did not want to chair.
We asked her to co-chair it because when we tried to meet and Mr. Daniels wasn't here, she said, okay, she would co-chair, but she did not want to chair any committee, is what
I can, I, I can understand her frustration.
Mr. Daniels that, you know.
I, I can understand her frustration.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a choice whether or not to co-chair, to chair a committee.
I didn't think
If I had known that, then maybe I would've chosen that a long time ago. Yeah, I mean, is there anything in the rules that said that, uh, we don't have to chair any committee, but just sit on the committee or maybe not come to the meetings? I'm, I'm not clear. After eleven years, I am not clear.
It says, I believe, that the mayor appoints, and, um, council concurs. And then I think we have been, um, gratuitous enough to ask people, um, which ones they want to chair, and then the mayor makes that decision. That's the way,
Correct.
Practice has done.
Right, and that's what I have, I, I think, uh, before I became back as mayor, uh, vice mayor, she, um, she was trying to get the standing committees together, and so she did that. And then when I was back, uh, appointed, I also asked, um, if council members, what committees they were interested in, and I got some, but, um, and I got some yeses, some nays, but to me, I think, is when we're elected as elected officials, the residents expect us to, you know, they even call, why are you having committee meetings? I mean, that's part, it's not, it's more than just council and committee of the whole meetings that we need to have.
Well, I've been sitting in and actually running the Law and Safety Committee, uh, meetings because, uh, Ms. Munia is, uh, the Finance Committee Person, and, uh, she chairs that, but she also co-chair Safety and Law, so I stepped in to do that. But the Committee Person is Ms., Ms. Key was assigned to that, so what do we do with the Law and Safety piece then?
Ms. Key was, Ms. Key, I guess she could speak for herself, but she was not interested in chairing that committee either. So what do we do? Count, uh, Mr., Mr. decide?
So if I, if I step away from that, then what happens? I'm confused.
There's not intent, because the charter says you're supposed to have standing committees. We don't get to choose not to have it, because we, I mean, we have to be, do something for the residents. I don't think it's fair for residents not to have anything. We talked about our boards and commissions, and then we have people wanting to be on there, to be on different committees, but if we don't have a, we've got a Recreation Commission, people ready to go. But if we can't get a Recreation Committee going, what kind of direction can we give them? Because they want to work with Recreation. So, that's where we stand.
Not to resolve, okay.
It's not resolved, but we're gonna continue to push on because I know, um,
She did ask Mr. decide.
I did ask him.
It's a sad day, okay?
Other than to, do you verify that it does say that?
I don't know what it says off the top of my head.
Oh, okay.
She can't hear you.
I don't know what it says, uh, off the top of my head, but I can go out there on the internet and take a look.
I'll move on. Will, will, yes, ma'am?
I have another announcement I completely forgot about. If I don't say it, then something, uh, may happen to me.
Okay.
Uh, Black Music Walk of Fame is celebrating its first year, uh, and they have four people that would go, would be a part of the induction, uh, ceremony on Saturday, July the twenty-seventh, at the twelve noon, it's all-white party. And by now, I hope all the council have gotten their invite. If you did, uh, feel free to answer. Uh, if not, it's, it's okay. Again, that is, uh, Saturday, July the twenty-seventh, at twelve noon. And, uh, uh, this, it, a commercial went out where that I was actually on the B T, uh, commercial. And I thank, uh,
Two minutes of fame.
Thank you for that. Yeah, two minutes of fame. But I was chosen. There you go. That's it. Please attend.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see. Last announcement, um, any hearing from the residents?
No, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so we don't have anyone calling for that. Then we're going to the regular agenda. Communications to council from the clerk of council, Lisa Randolph.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Uh, communications from the mayor, uh, I don't have anything. And communications from the interim village manager, Michael Lemon.
I wanted to, um, advise everyone that the C R A tax abatement program is online, and I encourage the public to take a look at it, and if they have any questions, to feel free to give me a call. Also, the new property maintenance code is on the website, and I encourage all residents to take a look at that as well, because there are, um, a number of things that, uh, are new, and we're going to be, uh, looking to enforce those as we go forward. Um, design work for, uh, renovating Simmons, Adams, Jackson, McGee, Carey, and Chester is underway. I hope to go out for bid by the end of the year with, uh, construction to begin, probably at the end of two thousand and twenty-five or sometime in early two thousand and twenty-six. There is a facade grant that is available. I sent to all of, uh, council, and if any business is interested in updating or redoing the facade of their business, um, money may be available to help, up to twenty-five thousand dollars if anyone's interested in that. Um, feel free to call me, or if council has, uh, any, uh, referrals, I'd be happy to take those as well. Um, let's see. Also, um, I'm still trying to get the water tap for the fountain across the street, believe it or not. It's been, um, very frustrating, and, uh, we're making another end run trying to get that done before, um, the Shakespeare in the Park event on the twentieth. I am getting, um, mayor's court ready, uh, for the property maintenance code, as well as the police department. Um, I still need to get a code enforcer. Uh, I've, you know, had someone, um, say they would do it, but the, uh, rate is, uh, very high, and I'm not sure that I'm going to go with that. Um, I've also asked Public Works to start clearing, uh, streets, curbs, sidewalks, uh, of weeds as we begin to implement our property maintenance code. I feel if we're gonna ask people to keep their, uh, property clean, we need to keep ours as well. So, uh, I'm, uh, working on that with, uh, Public Works. And then, um, there is a very important question, uh, before us. Um, we got, uh, information today, uh, on whether or not the Village of Lincoln Heights is amenable to, um, a medical, I'm sorry, a, an adult-use marijuana dispensary. So, um, I need to get some kind of an answer on that, so I can reply, uh, to the, uh, party that sent the email. And as you know, I have discussed this with several of you previously. Um, I'm not sure where you stand on it, but we need to take a position. If we're not interested in it, then we need to probably do some kind of a moratorium or something like that. Or, um, if you are interested, then we need to let people know that we are. So, uh, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, Mr. Lemon, where, where are they thinking about putting it? I think that would be one of the questions that I would ask, and, uh, number two, what type of revenue, uh, would that bring us?
Well, a, at the moment, I don't know. I, I, as I said, I just got an email today asking whether or not, uh, we're amenable to, um, discussing it and, and possibly doing it. So, um, I can certainly call and get more information, but I'm just presenting to you as a question that is, is, you know, we really should make some kind of a decision on.
I'm open to discussion, but I mean,
Mm-hmm. Well, I know you need more information, of course.
Okay, but I'm open to discussion.
Mr. Lemon, is this recreational or medical?
Uh, it, it's called adult use. Um, there's medical, and then there's adult use. So this would probably be more on the recreational.
Is legal in the state of Ohio now? So, yeah, because I know the last time it wasn't, and we, something came before us. I can't remember what the legislation is, but we did vote on something. It's worth look, pulling out and looking and see, um, what we voted on, and then have a conversation around that, maybe one of the upcoming committees.
Well, we know, um, from the state that, um, they're going to start this program off by having the medical dispensaries also do the adult-use or recreational. And then I believe by September, they're going to take applications for, uh, up to four hundred and fifty, I believe, or four hundred and sixty around the state for recreational. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how much revenue that's gonna generate for each community. It's gonna be based upon a percentage of revenue that's taken in, but, um, it, it's something we need to think about.
You know, I guess I'm kinda, Mayor, um, just, it's just baffling why someone would just ask that question without sending a prospectus to say, this is what I'm thinking, would, would y'all be interested in looking at that instead of just a conversation? I mean, a, a two, three-page prospectus on adult marijuana in Lincoln Heights.
Uh, I understand. Uh, there are a number of requirements by the state. Um, you know, it can't be within a certain discipline of the school and, and those types of things. Um, and, um, I know that a number of potential, um, dispensaries are looking for sites around the county. So it may be one of those individuals that's just, you know, starting to explore that, I'm not sure. But I'll get more information, um, because we're gonna need a lot of information before we would make any kind of a commitment to anyone.
Right.
But, um, I just don't know whether or not you're receptive to the possibility, or whether you just wanna say absolutely no, not under any circumstance. But, um, there, there are ways that, um, the dispensaries might be able to get around that, so. I'm full of good news tonight, aren't I?
Yes, hey, I mean, that's, I mean, it's, I, I, I guess I'm the only one that has said anything, but, you know, you don't wanna turn down an opportunity to discuss with just a little bit more, you know, information, because it is now, you know, legal, so.
As I've said, it is legal. There's a possibility that a, a dispensary could open right on your doorstep, you know, one street away. And if there are any issues at all, um, you're gonna be a part of it, and you're gonna have to deal with it. But also, um, you know, I was thinking that as we look at our financial future, you know, there's a possibility that this could help support, uh, stabilization. So, um, that's kinda why I bring it up, and I've mentioned before that I've dealt with these before, and I had two medical marijuana dispensaries that generated, uh, well over a, a million dollars now. Now, with the state, um, stepping in and, and getting more involved in it on the individual dispensaries and setting, you know, how it works, then, um, I'm not sure how much that revenue will generate. I, I don't know how much the dispensaries will generate at this point. I can tell you a percentage, but I can't tell you how many dollars it's gonna be, because it, it's, uh, it's too early to tell.
Mayor, if I may, well, Mr. Lemon, um, I am chair of the, um, economic development committee. So, um, I think it's something that, um, I'd like to see brought to the committee. And I'm gonna say this because we missed out on an opportunity. There was gonna be a fourteen-million-dollar facility built in the Village of Lincoln Heights, where a junkyard was, where now a trucking company is, where we get little if any revenue, right? And I'm talking about the pre-release center, not the prison, but a pre-release center that could have been here fifty, thirty years ago, right? And the salaries amounted to one-point-three-million dollars, right? And just think about the withholding the tax revenue we would have gotten from that. But folks did not want to talk about it. So, we at least need to talk about it. I'd like you to, to get the information.
I'll do my best.
And we'll put it in the economic development, or if you, if they wanna meet with some other folks, because maybe council's not ready to say, I'm interested or not interested. But this, we have this problem with the taxes. We can't afford to pass by any opportunity, at least looking at it, and giving, um, the residents the right to vote or tell us, no, we don't want it. We have to be able to take something to them, because residents need to be able to speak for themselves. If they want it, don't want it, let them vote on it. But we're stopping, I don't wanna stop residents', um, input, so, please, if you would get that information for us.
That's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions for Mr. Lemon? All right, is a motion to accept his, uh, oral report?
It's a move.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay. Two. Second, Ms. Baber, okay. All right. Lisa has stepped out for a minute. So, we have the second reading. We're going, we're, we're going to the, uh, second reading of resolution number twenty-twenty-four R fifty-nine. What's your pleasure, council?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the title to resolution requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with the replacement of the general operating levy, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of sixteen mils for the current year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can, can I, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead, because then I, when you ask the question, then I'll question.
Okay, that is Ms. Key. And then that was Mr., that was Mr. Daniels, right?
Second, yes.
Yes, sir, okay. All right, it's been moved in second to motion to amend.
Ma'am, I have a question. So, when we say, could you state it again, um, Ms. Key?
Resolution requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with the replacement of the general operating levy, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of sixteen mils for the current year.
Okay, I didn't think I heard existing. I just wanted to make sure people know that it was the current, okay.
Call for the mo, to the amended.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes and one nay. That motion does pass.
Okay. So, this one, I think I can go and just go into...
We still need a motion on the amendment of the language.
We did. I think she did.
We need a motion to amend to include this language.
Oh, we need another, okay, there's another one. Why can't I have that one? I don't have that one.
That's twenty-four R fifty-nine.
Oh, you know what?
Mm-mm. Amend the second piece.
Okay, all right, so we need, is there a motion for, uh, to amend the second half? Section three?
Section three, amending it.
You did two amendments there. Two amendments, right? Right, we're still on fifty-nine.
Right, so there, I didn't think we had an amendment for, you mean, was it?
We do, for R fifty-nine, if, uh, you look at the attachment that has comparison written on it, you'll see, I think you've got your fingers on it.
It's on your hand.
On the first page there, on the first page, at the bottom. Where's, uh, you just had it, Ms. Mitchell?
No, that's, that's sixty.
Okay. Uh, you should have another one for fifty-nine, but it is the same language.
Okay, but go ahead, I don't, go ahead, I mean, I, I don't see it. Oh, I got it. Okay.
But you are, I mean, I trust you. Motion to amend resolution twenty-twenty-four R fifty-nine, section three, to read as presented in the comparisons, based on the auditor's request.
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber? Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. That motion to amend, section three does pass.
If it's been in the rules.
Uh, we just go right into the second reading. Unless anyone has any other motions.
Okay. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash R dash fifty-nine. Resolution requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with the replacement of the general operating levy for the current year.
Question?
Should second reading indicate the amended, the amendment that was passed?
It can't.
It doesn't have to?
If I, you, I don't have, Miss.
I was out, so if someone could tell me what it was, I was coming in towards the end when she did the amendment.
She, uh, the amendment was to add, um, uh, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of sixteen mils, the last line of section two.
Replacement of the existing levy?
It's all right here. Goes in the front. So, you're basically bringing that back up. You're taking the replacement. Replace, okay. You're just bringing it up.
Okay. So, I'm going to reread it, hopefully got it right. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash R dash fifty-nine. Resolution requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with the replacement of the general operating levy, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of sixteen mils for the current year.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber? Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Motion for passage?
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. That motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Second.
Moved in second?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Same. Motion order for resolution twenty-twenty-four R sixty?
Motion to amend the title?
Second.
Motion to amend the title to resolution declaring the need to increase at a rate not to exceed two mils. Then the rest of it is the exact same.
Ms. Key, can you do that again, please?
Yes. Motion to amend the title, resolution declaring the need to increase at a rate not to exceed two mils. The operating levy passed in two thousand nineteen, everything else will remain the same. So, all I'm asking for is the insert at the rate, at a rate not to exceed two mils.
Oh, second.
See, two mils, okay. Second by.
Section two.
Section two, okay. It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ti- Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Motion to amend resolution twenty-twenty-four R sixty in section three to include the comparison language that was submitted back from the auditor.
Second.
It's been moved in second to amend, adding the comparison listed by the auditor. Roll call?
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass. So, I start and read it. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash R dash sixty. Resolution declaring the need to increase at a rate to not exceed two mils. The operating levy passed in two thousand nineteen and the first placed upon the twenty-twenty tax list in the Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, which is in excess of the ten-mil limitation, as well as requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
Moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Motion for passage?
It's a move.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Motion for emergency clause?
It's a move.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
Motion order for resolution twenty-twenty-four R sixty-three?
Motion to re, um, to read by title only. Second. Who did the second, you did, Nona? Okay.
Okay, it's been moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
No.
Councilwoman Nona Kahoumouya?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs-Jeter?
Yes.
For Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree?
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay. The motion does pass.
There any questions?
Question? Does a repeal require an emergency clause?
No.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash R dash sixty-three. Resolution repealing twenty-twenty-four dash sixty-one. Resolution declaring the necessity to a levy, a replacement of a tax for the current year for fire and EMS in excess of the ten-mil limitation in the Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Question?
Yes.
The signature line is for Vice Mayor, is that on purpose, or was that just unintentional?
Just a typo.
What was the question? Right here. Do we have Vice Mayor? To the mayor. All right. Motion to suspend?
Oh, some move.
She said, she missed it.
Who did it?
I did. I don't know who's second.
I can second. I'll second. I'll second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
Motion to receive for passage?
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
Motion order for resolution twenty twenty-four R sixty-four. This one is a man right? Because you're adding this. So it was. Oh, I'm sorry.
We did not need a motion to amend for the auditor's language on the rest of these.
Okay, thank you. Alright. First reading.
The motion to suspend is in order?
Don't read it, I gotta read it.
Should I read it by title?
Okay.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R sixty-four, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for fire EMS in excess of the ten-mil limitation in the village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. Motion to amend the title? To read, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for fire and EMS in excess to the ten-mil limitation, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of one fourteen point seven five mils, and then the remainder of the title will stay the same.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
Motion to suspend.
Any question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The amended, um, title is as follows, Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixty-four, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for fire and EMS in excess of the ten-mil limitation, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of fourteen point seven five mils in the village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Motion to suspend. Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
Motion to receive for passage? Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Second.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
Motion order for resolution twenty twenty-four R sixty-five.
Automatically reads about title.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixty-five, resolution repealing twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixty-two, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for police protection services in excess of the ten-mil limitation in the village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Any question? There are no questions, motion to suspend?
Motion. Second.
It's been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
Motion for passage?
So move.
Second. Been moved in second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
One left. Motion order for resolution number twenty twenty-four R sixty-six.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R sixty-six, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for police protection services in excess of the ten-mil limitation in the village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. Motion to amend the title? To read, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for police protection services in excess to the ten-mil limitation, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of seventeen mils, and then the rest will proceed as follows.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
I don't know where you were.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass. I am going to reread with the amended. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash sixty-six, resolution declaring the necessity to levy a replacement of a tax for the current year for police protection services in excess of the ten-mil limitation, which is a replacement of the existing levy in the amount of seventeen mils in the village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Oh. Who's the second?
Councilwoman Calhoun Muia. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, that motion does pass.
Motion for passage?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Bab, um, Baber.
No.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
It is, it is, okay. Motion for emergency clause?
Second. I know, I need. Oh, uh, move. Second. Okay.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
No.
Councilwoman Nona Calhoun Muia.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six aye votes, one nay, the motion does pass.
Alright, that is the last one. There's no consent agenda, no supplemental, any miscellaneous business.
Yes, Mayor. Um, I forgot to say that, um, all seniors who had a banner may come and pick their banners up between, um, nine and five. As for, um, I get Ms. Randall or Ms. Bowers?
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you like to, uh, to do a robo-call on that as well?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Any other miscellaneous?
Did you find an answer to our question?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I shut it down since the time had passed, but basically what it said is that, um, uh, the council shall appoint the chairs of the standing committees, and, uh, then there's some provisions about removal uh, for failure to obtain excuse, uh, from a committee meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't hear all of what you said, Mr., beside the last part.
Yeah, so it's in section ten of the Rules of Council, and it says that council shall appoint the chairs, uh, of the standing committees, and then the next section talks about unexcused absences and removal for unexcused absences.
So just for clarification, so, but what the mayor does is get the information for us to vote on, where she asks, who wants to do this, who wants to do that, and then she presents it, okay?
The Rules of Council are silent about that, but I do recall there was a resolution passed by council uh, appointing the chairs and the standing committees.
Alright. If there's nothing further, motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
But good night.